Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, Monday, November the 2nd, 2015, at 9:00 in Council Chambers. I will call the meeting to order, and is there any late items that need to be added? No? And we have one delegation with us today, and this is Bryn White, who's with the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine Conservation Program, and she's the manager. And she's going to give us a little display over here and talk to us about establishing a local conservation fund. So, welcome Bryn.
Thank you very much for having me. That's great, thank you. Did we need to transfer the presentation on to...
Yes, we do.
Okay. You can, you have the technology. Thanks. That's all right. Perfect. Wonderful. Thanks so much. So, we have about 10 minutes. Just wanted to come and have an opportunity to introduce an idea that we're exploring with the Regional District and with member municipalities in the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine. And as Mayor McCorduff did indicate, this is establishing a regional conservation fund for our area. I've been the program manager for this conservation partnership for nine years. We've been in place for 15 years. The Town of Assoius has been our partner since 2009. And so, there are 50 organizations that work together on land and wildlife conservation in this area. And so, what we do is essentially, give you a little information about our program. There's about $2 million worth of conservation investments in the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine every single year. All those partners from local and regional governments, the province, the federal government, and non-government groups, groups that you might know like Ducks Unlimited, Nature Trust of V.C., Nature Conservancy of Canada, all work together to prioritize and collaborate and leverage resources here in the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine. So, we work to support local and regional governments with good planning and information to help do sustainable community planning. We secure lands for conservation. We work with private landowners to help them to secure habitat and to protect land and wildlife on their properties. We work with First Nations. We bring science forward. So, there's all kinds of approaches that we use to be able to work on land and wildlife conservation. So, I've been doing that since about 2001. The idea that's come forward is to establish a source of funding that's distinct and reliable for conservation work and sustainability in the region. Once that fund is established, then community groups and organizations can apply for funding to support their projects. And many times, that can be done hand-in-hand with communities and the work that they're doing to advance sustainability. For example, if you have an integrated sustainability plan, as Assoius does, Parks Master Plan and those kind of things, these are the funds that can help to support some of those projects. So, money from the local fund then can be used to match outside funds to increase the power of the money that's raised in the community. And then, this fund really is overseen by local governments, and it can be helped to be shaped by independent technical committees. So, I'm going to give you some examples of where this has been done elsewhere, and why. So, why are people looking at establishing a local conservation fund? This concept's come up here in the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine, obviously because of the really unique values, ecological values. Nowhere else in Canada can people walk outside their door and see bighorn sheep, smell sage in the wind. I mean, it's obviously, we're in this really unique, it defines our communities. It is sort of the reason why this place is so attractive for investability and visitation. So, those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure that extend into the future. Our rich green space, our unique habitats, our unique wildlife, and also the quality of life that we have in our communities, clean air, clean water. You know, we have all of those things we take for granted, and these are funds that can help to secure those things. We know that natural areas in the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine and species here are at risk. There are rare and endangered species. Species occur here that occur nowhere else in V.C., and in some cases, nowhere else in Canada. So, we have a very unique responsibility. The South Okanagan-Samhailkamine Conservation Program, in partnership with the Regional District, established a strategy called "People, Nature, and Our Future", and it establishes recommendations about how to conserve and restore those unique values. So, one of the key recommendations in that strategy was to create a local conservation fund to develop capacity to be able to retain green space in the future, protect our watersheds, ensure that those green spaces and species occur going into the future. So, the million-dollar question is really, where does this money for conservation come from? And nature conservation under this model can be considered just like a service, as though you provide planning for parks, recreation for libraries, for sewer, for water. It's really under the normal business of what local government can provide. And it can be financed through a property value, a parcel levy. It can be financed through local area service fees or levies. So, there's a lot of areas around the province that have done this already. For example, the Central Kootenays, Capital Regional District, Upper Columbia Valley, and Central Okanagan Regional District, and now the Central Kootenay Valley as well. So, that was just coming forward in 2014. In other places around the province, we can see it's roughly between, it works out between $15 and $25 per household or per parcel, depending on how their model is set up. We know that in the Columbia Valley, $230,000 is raised every single year. That gets allocated to sustainability projects, to wildlife protection, watershed, working lands protection, working on all those, sometimes they work on invasive species, sometimes it's a water quality project. So, they have that money to be able to advance those projects. Cowatton Valley Regional District, $715,000 per year to acquire new parks. Capital Regional District, the ability for the Capital Regional District is raising something like $3 million in a very short amount of time. So, we know that these areas have put this in place. Sometimes it lasts for 10 years. They will establish a fund, it has a sunset clause, it goes to bed after 10 years. There's a lot of collaboration with local conservation partners so that these funds get managed in a way that helps to support the local priorities. Here are some of the things that we've been talking about with respect to projects the community is interested in. Every time we come out to speak to the community about land and wildlife and watershed protection, these are the things that come up as being really important. People want to see really important ecological areas protected, species that are threatened and endangered. They'd like to see those things, you know, be secured for future. Community watersheds, so ensuring water quality and quantity, of course, really important to folks we've talked with. Protecting natural areas from invasive plants and off-road vehicles, in some cases, fire, when you have the ability to do good fire prescriptions. Getting volunteers outside to do nature conservation activities. Protecting places for hiking and walking, green space for people to be in, and those viewscapes for communities. And again, helping to educate the community. One of the examples that we show people, this great picture at the bottom, this is north of Summerland. This is an actual wetland. This is 2012. And so, we worked as a partnership to look after this wetland and fence it off so that there wasn't off-road vehicle and cattle access. This is the wetland one year after. These are the kinds of things that we can do together when partners work together. Just bring those places back and really make a difference for sustainability. So, again, just on the side here, an example from Penticton, but there's lots of examples locally we could use as well. The restoration of Penticton Creek. So, bringing fish habitat and diversity back to that creek. Millions and millions of dollars worth of recreational fishery values being restored here, partners working together. So, we know from conservation that when you have an initial investment, a little seed fund, you can leverage three times that investment from outside grant sources. So, the power of this conservation fund to be able to leverage additional resources to a local community is deeply significant. So, what kinds of projects could be eligible for funding? Again, it just varies from region to region, depending on the goals that the community has and what the public is supportive of, what local governments are trying to accomplish, whether it's parkland acquisition or open space, trails network development, watershed and drinking water protection. All of those projects and in-between are things that could become eligible. And what the model is in other places is that you set up a criteria, terms of reference so that the fund gets managed and directed by local priorities. So, the money gets raised locally and spent locally. Who holds and manages the conservation fund in other places? What's happened is that the non-government community has come forward and really put the idea forward. The local government establishes the fund. The municipality or regional district collects the money, so it's your requisition. And you can administer it in many different ways. In the Kootenays, for example, our sister initiative helps to administer, so it's not so much work for the local government. So, they have help in administering the fund, setting up the criteria, accepting the applications, reviewing the projects, and then reporting out. So, a partner organization could be able to help with aspects of the fund. And again, under the local, under the community charter for municipalities, this is something that's set under Section 8, Subsection 2. So, this is something that this, a service like a conservation fund is at the discretion of council, but it certainly could go to electors for assent within a regional district under the Government Act. It certainly would go to assent to the public. And just so you're aware, and Mayor McCorduff has been at the table as the Regional District Board, we've been talking about this idea. The Regional District is exploring the concept with us to be able to see whether there's public support for such an idea. And so, we're going to be reporting back to them. We've been having a number of focus groups and discussions with chambers of commerce, with Rotary, with business associations, with seniors, with all kinds of groups. And we've had some fairly strongly-directed conversations all through the region in the last eight weeks. It's been really interesting to hear what people are concerned about. Again, we hear the same things, water, water protection, safe, adequate drinking water, green space, viewscapes, places for people to go and be. So, those are all the things that we hear from the community. Again, just in terms of a conservation fund, it can be non-lapsing, so you can carry money over from fiscal year to fiscal year. In the Columbia Valley, they held on to some funds till they had a really good securiment project come up, and they were able to secure a really important piece of property right in an in-holding of a provincial park. It had been a private land that had sat there forever, and they actually were able to accomplish that acquisition. So, millions of dollars brought in from outside sources to match their local contribution. Again, you can have a lifespan of 10 years usually, and then you can ask the public whether this is something they continue to support. Capital Regional District, they had it in place for 10 years. They went back to the community and said, "What do you think?" And they said, "Absolutely, we'd love to see this continue, and please increase it." So, it's quite publicly supported in the places that it occurs. So, just wanted to introduce the concept, get some feedback from people around the community. Our goal is to establish this conservation fund by the end of 2016. We hope, we have, the beauty of the tool is that you can do it very flexibly. So, if a municipality wanted to do a conservation fund, they could do it alone, or they could participate as a regional service with the Regional District and other municipalities. So, that ability to be very flexible is there. Of course, the more people participating, the stronger the fund, the greater the ability to develop capacity. In summary, I have to say there's a strong support for this concept in the community. We've talked to people about what they feel about a levy or a property tax with this concept. Across the board, we have not heard anything that's negative around that idea of the tool using a property tax. We've asked people about the threshold willingness to pay. What would you be willing to pay per year? And we hear everything from, you know, $10, $20, to $100. We know that the right threshold for this really is probably under $10, and we still have the ability to raise $500,000 a year. So, just depending on who participates and how that goes forward. Specific projects here that might benefit, so again, just ideas from your Parks and Trails Master Plan, which is very good, and your Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. There's all kinds of ideas and directives and recommendations there. This kind of a fund could give those ideas legs. You could accomplish those concepts from there with this kind of a fund. And then, the threshold amount per household really is, is again, as I've mentioned, it's roughly around probably $10 per household per year. So, just want to leave that with you. Looking forward to ideas, questions, comments, discussion. And we will be reporting back to the Regional District likely as the budget gets set. So, we're really interested in hearing from municipalities whether this is something that they might be interested in thinking about.
Thank you very much Bryn, and definitely, I'm sure that everybody totally supports the idea of having this. Protecting our water, our parks, our fish, our wildlife are super important, and I'm glad that we're kind of on the right track with Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, and we've just done Parks and Trails Shred as well, so we are working on that. Can I ask what, how does the possibility of a national park fit into all of this? Or does it, or is this totally separate?
Yeah. So, just to give you a bit of a heads-up or a, it's a little bit of a caveat. Our partnership program, because we have such a diverse collection of partners in our program, SOSCP has never been able to take a position on the national park proposal. We certainly have interacted with the materials and the proposals that have come forward, but we haven't been able to take a position, and, you know, we remain neutral on the concept of a national park.
Okay.
Certainly, some of our partners are very much in favor of a national park, some of our partners are not.
Yes.
So, that being said, this concept is separate from the concept of a national park. But certainly, whatever happens with respect to management on the landscape, communities are struggling to be able to do things in their own way and be able to achieve their own sustainability objectives. This tool gives the ability for local governments to accomplish those objectives as laid out in things like the Sustainability Plan or Parks and Master Plans. So, this is really the tool that's separate from a national park or crown lands, but certainly would have some interaction with sustainability on those properties.
So, the reason that you did come to the Regional District is that really, working together is always a good idea for anything?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question, or two questions, actually. One is, what percentage goes to admin in the fund?
That's a really good question. So, it depends on how it's all structured. The local governments normally don't take an administrative fee. Usually, they've been able to set up a helpful relationship, for example, with the Conservation Partnership or with other partners to be able to administer it. So, it's not really overly onerous. There's a small amount, for example, in the East Kootenays that goes to the Conservation Partnership to help with the administration. It's a very small amount. Normally, when you administer a grant, it's about 10% to 15%. My understanding is it's far below that.
And when you talk about a regional fund, is that in the South Okanagan?
So, we're talking, our program area, that's a really good question. Sorry, I should have mentioned that. Our program area delivery is the Regional District boundary of the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine. So, we're talking with the South Okanagan-Samhailkamine Regional District and member municipalities, all the six member municipalities within that membership. So, it would just be in this region.
So, everybody in the fund would have to agree on supporting a different, a project per se?
If that was the way that people decided to go forward. But individual communities could do this on their own as well. You could be part of a regional fund, or you could do this individually, depending on your druthers.
Thank you.
Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you. Bryn, because I feel somewhat selfish with these kind of things, I'm definitely interested in the municipal aspect of it and doing it on our own. But I do see the benefits of, you know, collaborating with the Regional District as well. But I'm interested if we did it on our own, who would spend the money? Is that, do we collaborate with your organization? Or do we come up with our own projects and that type of thing? It's always been a mystery to me how these things get off the ground.
Right.
So, if you introduce a levy at, say, $10 per resident or per household or however you structure it, the funds would come in through that taxation process?
Yes.
How do we decide on a project? I think that's one of the things that Jim was asking, but now I'd like to know about if we went with the municipality concept.
Right. So, how it works in other places is that they set up a clear terms of reference for how those funds, how the levy works. You establish a bylaw, there's a bit of process there. You actually do the requisition, so it's your funding, it sits in your accounts. In other places, they've set up a really clear terms of reference, so this is how it gets spent. These are the community priorities. This is the criteria by which we accept proposals. The local governments might have their own projects that they'd like to accomplish, and this is a way of getting partners to help partner on those projects and leverage those outside resources. Sometimes, local governments are not eligible for those outside grant funds. So, you have a process, and possibly, and everywhere else, they've got a technical committee, but also a decision-making body that helps to allocate those funds every year.
But how would your organization benefit from that process?
Well, because I think we could bring partners to the table to help accomplish some of the things that we've seen local governments need to address. For example, if I look at your Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, I can see 10 things that we could help with in terms of getting those things accomplished. So, how would we benefit? We would be able to actually interact with you and be able to get projects done on the ground, get our partners helping with them, bring grant funds to that. There's a small administrative fee, so, but we're supported by outside grants. We have other government funds that we pretty much run on 100%. So, this is not a, this is not a capacity-building project for us necessarily. It's being able to connect with our local government partners more strongly and being able to accomplish those things. So, again, you make the final decisions, but we have a process set up. It's very clear and transparent as to how the money gets spent and the projects that have really become priorities. It works very well in other places.
Thank you.
So, were you trying to ask, how do you decide what the projects are? Or who provides the input for the projects? Was that...
Well, it was more generalizing on how the concept is developed and how we would collaborate with you. So, I might ask if we should decide to go the Regional District route and be part of that? Is that process still intact?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, what they're waiting for is to hear back, whether there's enough public support for the concept. Essentially, the Regional District, I think, will choose to go to referendum so that this idea will come forward and elect, you know, people who are constituents will then vote whether this comes forward or not, whether the bylaw gets established or not. That likely will happen later in 2016, around June, I think, is the target date. So, whether the Regional District goes forward or Town of Assoius would like to do this alone, I understand some of the difficulty with being able to agree on regional priorities, especially when monies are raised in communities and there are outside regional sort of... So, I really get that kind of push-pull. And so, we'd be supportive if municipalities wanted to go this alone. We could certainly go through that and build that with you and help to set up all the criteria in terms of reference and the processes together.
Thank you for saying that about the Regional District.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
This one works.
If we were to go the regional route... Good, thank you very much. I'm not, but thank you so much. The, if we were to go the regional route, what would be the decision-making process? I'm sure some of the people around the table, if not all, share an aversion about decisions going through the Regional Board. So, what would be the kind of decision-making process that could be adopted in that case?
I think it's entirely up to how we build it together. So, you know, it's open. There are other models we can look at. In the Columbia Valley, they certainly have member municipalities and electoral areas participating together, and it works very well because they've taken the time to develop that relationship, have a terms of reference and criteria. I haven't heard that there's any rubs around whether the funding gets spent, but I do understand those issues. I do get that there's, you know, it's not always, it's not always possible to agree on those regional areas, so...
So, it's flexible, Mark.
Absolutely. That is the really great thing about this tool, is there is maximum flexibility around how it gets implemented.
Thank you. Probably should give Bryn the mic back. Give Bryn the mic back? Well, it has to go on Granicus, that's why. Anybody else? Counselor King.
Thank you. Is this the first town you presented this to, other than the RDOs?
No, no, I've had conversations with the city of Penticton, District of Summerland. We're having a conversation very soon. We'll be talking with Oliver, we'll be talking with Caramias and Princeton. So, we'll be discussing this with all the member municipalities, as well as coming back to the Regional Board, where the Planning and Development Committee, there are municipal folks there too.
Okay, good concession.
Yeah. But I know that it's hard often at the Regional Board for municipal folks to bring that back in its entirety. So, you know, you've got other things on your plate. So, that's why I'm making individual visits and just connecting with communities to see what your ideas are about it.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Youngberg.
Good morning. Very interesting concept. I think it should be supported by our municipality. I think it's a great plan. However, it may be interesting, for an example, our Trails and Park Plan that we've got in place at the moment. Because it's not finished, if in fact, we went with the Regional District, because it's affected by the Regional District as well, would the funds be available with a project that is in place but hasn't been completed?
Yeah, yes. I think it's just, you know, we've got a lot of ability to build this the way that you want it to roll out. So, we have all the time in the world to figure out how it will work, what our relationship is with the region and the community itself, what the criteria is, what the public thinks is important, what your local government needs are. We have a lot of time to be able to roll that out. I mean, once you get a bylaw in place, it has to go to the inspector of municipalities. It takes time to actually get in place. So, the first levy may not come forward until 2017. By that time, those, that final Trails component, I think, will be completed, and I think you'll have a very good sense of what the priorities are.
I guess, I guess the actual organization decides on the percentage that's allocated if it were the Regional District? I think that's what you were referring to before, is that, you know, it would be the Board that would decide. For an example, if we had a small park that we needed, but Penticton had a larger park, if the funds were substantially sufficient, we could, would the Board just make the decision to do the Penticton project and the Assoius project? Would you be involved in that process, or would it just be the Regional District?
I think what we try to do is we'd establish a steering committee that involved all the municipalities, all the Regional District electoral areas. You would have public folk be able to provide input. You'd have technical advisors, but you would have a clear process around how those funds get allocated. And what I'm hearing from communities is that they would like local funds to be spent locally. And I'm hearing that from electoral areas too.
Sure.
So, where funds are raised in Penticton, they'd love to continue on with the Penticton Creek Restoration Project, for example. And that's why this tool is very good, because you can then allocate funds that are raised locally to the local community. You just set that up in the terms of...
Yeah, good point.
Counselor Rhodes.
Very interesting.
Thanks again, Mayor McCordoff. Bryn, I'm wondering if we move this forward, and I think we would have to have some debate, perhaps through a report and some future meeting, that kind of thing. If it gets past that process, would you be willing to do, say, like, an open house or something in our community so we could get a sense of how our residents feel?
Yeah.
I mean, I know you're very positive about it. I've had an opportunity to discuss this with a, you know, very small amount of people. It all seems positive. But I think the decision-making process has to have public input. So, you would help us with that process as well?
Yeah, I think we would do it together. So, we're setting up a series of conversations with the Regional District. There's some open houses coming up. It's, the focus is, the focus initially was the new and privately sensitive development permit areas that we've been working on with Regional District, but we also have the opportunity to have this conversation to the public as well. So, there's a whole, in the electoral areas. So, there's a whole series of conversations rolling out in November, December, January. We could certainly have a public conversation about this in Assoius. I think that's a great idea.
I ask that specifically because when you introduced that terrible word, taxation, people's opinions and ideas changed dramatically about how they felt before you mentioned that word. So, we need to develop a plan that took that into consideration.
I have to tell you, the conversations we've had recently, and we've reached out to groups we don't normally meet with on a day-to-day basis, chambers... to groups we don't normally meet with on a day-to-day basis, chambers, Rotary, seniors, business leaders, we met with realtors in the region, we've had this conversation. And what's really interesting is almost every one of those people we've talked to have said, of course, nobody likes new taxes, of course, we don't like, you know, the idea and the, the word is terrible, and yet the concept around everyone contributing. And they even had a brainstorm about what other word you would use. Right? They were saying, how about framing an annual contribution to, you know, to sustain, to the, to protect the quality of life of our communities? How do we frame this differently? And they, and they gave me advice around how to go forward with using a different, you know, you have to, I mean, you have to say what it is, but, so that was something that was really positive. And I, you know, the things that have come out, you know, people have said, oh, seniors won't support it, and people on fixed income won't support it, and the business community will never support this. And guess what? That's not what I'm hearing from our conversations. I'm hearing a deep level of support. People care deeply about the future of their communities. They care about sustainability. They care about the quality of life. They care about future generations. It's, you know, that's what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing no more, no, we can't do anything about this. The threshold number might need to be tweaked. We need to ask the community what their willingness is around that. Some things I've heard from people is, you know, is this going to be clogged back to local government expenditures and is it going to be? And really, this tool is earmarked and designated for conservation and for sustainability. It doesn't go back into other things. And there's, you know, some questions about that, and, and, you know, I think when there's a committee that involves public and other partners, and there's technical people helping, and there's, you know, everybody working together, there's a higher level of comfort.
Absolutely. Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for you, actually. In your experience, have you ever come across this system where some of the monies actually in the Rotary monies are kept in the projects, or some of the monies toward the regional projects? Where there may be benefits for that, but it is, it is a regal project per se and make up bigger leverage in it? Do you have, is that already done?
Yes, yep, that is done. Yep, in the Kootenays, it's done all the time because you have member municipalities and electoral areas participating in the same conservation fund. So the projects are sometimes regional in scope and sometimes they're spent very locally in the community. So, yeah, and they come to agreement on that together. They collaborate on that prioritization and decision-making together.
Even second question is that would such a system be open to people woven above the tax element, currently making money from bank to bank?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And that was something that we, when we talked to the business community, they asked, is there an opportunity to donate to this? Because you can establish a charitable, local governments can issue charitable tax receipts because of who you are, you're able to do that. And so if there are donations, those things can be, receipts can be given for, for tax purposes.
So in one local project, the monies could be raised in two ways, let's say two-thirds become the fund and another third become the money.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Fund.
Yes, just.
Counselor Youngberg?
What about maintenance? Once you create something, do you, can you make an application to the fund periodically within, within the next 10 years to maintain it?
Yeah, yes, you can. And, and the nice thing about this is that there's no timeline or time lapse with this. So for example, other grant funds and government funds have a March 31st deadline. You have to spend the money, never to be seen again. It's a hard deadline. Here, you can establish seed funds, you can establish maintenance funds, so you can hold on to those things. They can grow over time, so you can hang on to those things for things that need to be maintained. That fence that you saw out at Ritchie Lake in the north end of Summerland, we have a very small little pot that the local sportsman club, we wrote the application for funding, the sportsman club held on to it. They have a little emergency fund for when deer knock down some of the, the wire, you know, or, or the, or the gate needs to be amended. So, and we've already done some maintenance things on that. So, yeah, they're very smart to hang on to some of those things, be able to see in the future.
Counselor Rhodes?
So I'd like to ask CIO Romanco how we could advance this to the next step, perhaps a report at some future, I mean, I don't think it's really all that time-sensitive, but is there a process that you'd like to see followed?
Well, any, any requisition from the budget should have a motion of counsel to at least put that, that particular item into the budget. I would suggest that we just be given through resolution a direction to bring back a report to council, to a regular meeting, and then council can debate whether or not you want to put this type of, of project into the budget process. It's not a matter that you're not giving it approval, it's just whether it should be considered, and if there would be an amount attached to it, then we can plan in around that in our budgeting process. Certainly, that report would have to do some research because if there is a regional district potential, the question becomes, are you, as, are, are we as a municipality going to be a part of that? And if, if we are, are we going to have our own plus the regional requisition?
Yeah.
What are the impacts if the Regional District pursues this? And, but at the same time, our municipality wants to pursue its own efforts, does that, what influence does that have on the Regional District? Because my understanding is that all regional partners have to be, provide approval for a project. So there's a number of things to explore, but certainly the, the first one would be to get it on the budget table, which would be through a report that we could probably be presented to council on the November 16th meeting if, if we get some direction today.
Would you like that motion now?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay. And Counselor Youngberg seconding? Yeah, there's, it doesn't look like there's a, a, a huge rush on this, although we want it to be into our budget plans.
Yes, well, we're, we're working on the budget, all the items that we talked about before and our long list, so this, this will, based on what could be the discussion on the 16th, if council says, yes, we want this on the list, then it'll become part of the long list and then.
And you can decide what to do.
And council can decide what we can do with it.
So the motion is, that, or the resolution is, is, would you like to read that back to us, please, Ms. Scott, when you've got it done?
Yes, I've moved Rhodes and Youngberg. We've resolved that administration be requested to bring a report to the November 16 regular meeting for discussion and budget consideration.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. So thank you very much, Bren, for providing all these ideas in a positive way, and we will certainly continue to deal with this, and we thank you for taking the time today to come and visit us.
Thanks for having me. It was one of the best discussions I've had with the group so far on this idea, so.
Well, please tell the rest of them that we're right on top of things.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't think we have anything else on the agenda, so I need a motion to adjourn, please. Counselor King, Counselor Campbell, all in favor? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. So we will take five minutes.
I take five.